We, the Bangla people, welcome you to our country. We are the lawful inhabitants of this peninsula for thousands of generations. We are part of this land on which we stand, part of the waters that flow in and around. We are part of the dreaming stories that are connected. The full awareness of oneness with the land and waters will ensure a future for the children of tomorrow. Ngariya, wunaguru bangala miriya, yuradamelbu. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome back for another year. It certainly started busy and it will just get busier. Item three, our obituary notices those that wish to or able to stand while we recognise those who have passed. Margaret White. Christian Cruz. Glemis Zerner. Gloria Mutton. Alan Turner. Rodney Gross. Barb Spurling. Albi Jack. Joan Tyus. Stephen Holland. William Irvine. Eric Leopold. Anthony Hall. Margaret McNichol. Jeffrey White. Snazana Skorap Mekin. Grease Butson. Eric Mummy. Harcourt Phillips. And Margaret Ellen Chevalier. I just ask you to remain standing for a moment, silence please. Thank you. Item four, our attendance record, we have apologies from councillors Westerman, Todd and Pond. We have no leave of absence. Item five, council member executive declarations, 5.1, conflicts of interest. Does anybody have a conflict of interest they believe they need to declare? No conflict? Sorry.
It's not really a conflict, but I will leave the chamber during the discussion of item 14.2.6, which is to do with the process for engaging independent persons for the CEO's fullness review.
Thank you, CEO. If there are no further conflicts of interests, item 5.2, gifts and benefits. Does anybody have a gift or benefit they feel they should declare? No, thank you. Item six, the minutes of the previous meeting, 6.1, confirmation of the minutes of the previous ordinary council meeting held on Monday 16th of December. Do I take it move councillor Knox, seconded councillor Inglis? We have a motion, I'll put that motion, those in favour. Against, carried, thank you. Item 6.2, confirmation of the minutes of the special council meeting held on Wednesday 22nd of January 2025. Would somebody care to move those minutes? Councillor Simpson, seconded deputy mayor Boarder. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against, carried, thank you. Item seven, matters adjourned or laid on the table, there are nil. Item eight, deputations, there are nil. Petitions, item nine, there are nil. Item 10, public question time. We do have a number of questions from a resident, Ms Jay Lee, and we thank her for those questions. First question is to do with the closure of Landrace Road. I need to give you some background so you understand the questions and answers in context. The background is that I'm concerned about the decision to block off the end of Landrace Road with permapine poles. This change was implemented without any public consultation, leaving residents unaware and unable to voice their opinions. The closure has made Berkshire Road the sole access point to the sand hills, which has significantly increased traffic on our road. This is particularly concerning given the high number of horse riders, including children, who regularly use this road. Additionally, the blockage restricts emergency services from accessing the sand hills, a popular area for motorbikes and horse riding, where accidents could occur. The permapine poles themselves pose a hazard to horse riders as they are at the same height as a rider's stirrups, creating a risk of entanglement and potentially leading to a serious accident. Question one, to address these concerns, could some of the poles be removed and replaced with a gate? This would allow safe access for horse riders and enable emergency services to respond more effectively in case of an incident. The answer, the land on which the permapine fencing has been erected is crown land and not land owned by council. The permapine fencing was installed by the Department of Environment and Water in late 2021. This was not a council project. Sinage has been installed by DU, which manages access to the claypan area, all under the care and control of DU. Administration considers the removal of a panel of the permapine fencing to allow safer access for horses and emergency services a reasonable request. However, as the fence is not located on council-owned land, this request should be directed to the Department of Environment and Water. The next question in relation to public toilet replacement costs. The background is that the cost of $350,000 to replace the foreshore toilets is quite excessive. Question one, is there a total cost breakdown accessible to the public for the foreshore toilet replacement? Answer one, the total cost of the foreshore toilet replacement was $311,300, broken down as follows. Demolition of old toilet, $32,500. Service connections, $11,200. The building materials and installation, $253,100. Landscaping, $14,500. Question two, how many public access toilets are there in the city? Answer, there are 15 public access toilets located throughout the city. Question three, how many of the city toilets have been replaced? Answer, other than the foreshore, there have been no other toilets replaced within the past five years. Question four, what is the total individual cost of the other toilets that have been replaced? The answer, not applicable. Question five, are there any other toilets scheduled for replacement this year? If so, what is the budgeted cost of the upgrade to the toilets? The answer, the Westland toilets are scheduled for renewal at an estimated cost of $440,000. Now, it should be noted that the current Westland toilets are not connected to the sewer and instead run on a hybrid septic system, which is no longer appropriate for the high level of usage at the site. The cost estimate given includes $130,000 to connect to the existing sewer system with this work to be completed by SA Water. The next question relates to the old civic building facade repair. The background is that the temporary scaffolding of the old civic building remains in place and that there have currently been no noticeable repairs made. Question one, given the fact that the scaffolding has been classed as temporary, how long has the scaffolding been in place? The answer, the scaffolding has been in place since 2021 to catch debris that has potential to fall onto the public outside the building. The location of the scaffolding corresponds to sections of the perimeter showing signs of being unstable. Question two, how often does a qualified inspector need to inspect the scaffolding? The answer, once every 30 days by a ticketed scaffold rigger. Question three, how much does the inspection cost every time it is undertaken? The answer, there is no separate cost for undertaking inspections. This is incorporated into the higher fee for the scaffolding, which is $250 per week. Question four, when is the old civic building facade repair scheduled to take place? The answer, notwithstanding the site is likely to be redeveloped, containment of unstable built fabric is required to ensure safety to the community until redevelopment occurs. The presence of the external scaffold is uninviting and does not support a positive development ethos for the city. Accordingly, council has requested for an alternative option to be investigated, being to encase dilapidated portions of the building with colour bond steel flashing. This will secure in place unstable built fabric, thus preventing it from falling and allowing for the scaffold to be removed. The timing of the works will depend on when a contractor can be engaged to undertake the works. Question five, is the $25,000 cost to repair a one-off cost or is it going to be ongoing? The answer, the initial cost of the alternative option, i.e. to encase dilapidated portions of the building with steel flashing, not repair the facade, was budgeted at $25,000. However, the quotations received significantly exceed the budget. An assessment is now underway with council's consulting engineer to review the installation methodology, which will significantly reduce the discrepancy between quotations received and the budget. Notwithstanding, the cost to encase is likely to exceed the budget of $25,000. Question six, what has been the total cost of the temporary scaffolding since it has been up? The answer, the total cost of the scaffolding since it was erected is $45,000. Question seven, is the council building going to be demolished? If so, why is the council going to spend $25,000 to fix the facade? The answer, council is currently investigating the future use of the Dalworth Terrace site and it is likely that any redevelopment of the site will not take place for at least another two years. Therefore, containment of unstable built fabric will be required for that period. On that assumption, the cost to adopt the alternative option that will provide a better amenity for the area is considered cost-effective. Next question relates to children in the Marina car park while boats are being launched. The background is that while at the Marina, with my son launching his boat, I observed children riding bicycles in the car park area where the boat was being reversed. This interaction between bicycles, children and vehicles creates a hazardous situation that could potentially lead to a serious accident or even the death of a child. The driver is distracted, worried about the children's movements. Additionally, there are vehicles using the Marina as a thoroughfare, racetrack or burnout area, which further exacerbates the risk. Question one, could the council consider implementing measures to separate pedestrians, bike riders and vehicles at the Marina as the current layout creates dangerous situations? The answer, current controls in place are signage that prohibits swimming in the Marina and bylaws for the use of the boat ramp for launching and retrieving boats. Designated pedestrian cycling paths throughout the Marina area to connect the foreshore path and the Yacht Club new beach area would further assist safe access to this area. A plan reflecting this connection was provided as part of the foreshore and Marina master plan. However, the Marina users made a deputation to council on completion of the master plan opposing some of the developments for the area. Subsequently, the Marina area was removed from the endorsed master plan and is scheduled for a separate workshop to progress the area. The workshop will provide an opportunity to engage with the Marina users and at least pare back the original plans and provide some simple connections and activation points to implement that focus on providing safe access for all. Question two, have there been any other reports from other users about the same issue? The answer, a complaint was lodged on 26th of February 2024 in reference to water safety at the Waila Marina. Final question relates to jetty rubbish bins and the background is that since there are no rubbish bins on the jetty for fishing waste, people are discarding it into the water instead of carrying it in their bags to take home. Question, could the council consider installing one bin at the start of the jetty and another chained bin at the far end for anglers to use? The answer, consideration of installing rubbish bins at the start and end of the jetty could be given by council if a recommendation or motion was to be put forward to a council meeting. Requests of this nature can be brought before council in one or any of the following ways. A petition could be presented to council, signed by residents requesting an increase in service by the installation of the bins. Filing receipt of a petition, the council may then call for a report to be prepared by the administration, outlining all the relevant considerations before making any decision. Or a motion with notice could be submitted by a council member in line with the local government procedures at meetings regulations, that council increase service levels at the jetty by the installation of the bins. Such a motion would also need to request information from the administration as to the relevant considerations before the council makes any decision. Any consideration of installing the bins will need to take into account the amenity of the jetty, the ability to affix the bins to the jetty given its very specialised construction and additional cost for emptying the bins. And we thank our resident for those questions. Item 11, council member activities. We will have them there on the screen scrolling through. Brief opportunity if anybody wants to make any special comment. If not, I thank everyone for what they are doing within the community. Sorry, I have a comment. Councillor Simpson.
I would like to congratulate every involved in the Australia Day presentation, both on the Sunday and on Thursday night. I thought both events went very, very well and were well addressed by the public.
Thank you councillor. Yes, I would certainly commend the staff for everything that was done behind the scenes that nobody sees and thank them very much. Item 12, presentations, we have nil or none. 13, committee reports, 13.1, minutes of audit and risk committee meeting of the 9th of December 2024. We have a recommendation to receive those minutes, would somebody care to move that recommendation? Move councillor Klobbaker, seconded councillor Simpson. In that case, no comments or questions, I'll put the motion.
Sorry, yes. On page 25 of the audit committee, it says greater communication between the committee and council is needed. How do we achieve that?
Excuse me, I had a comment regarding that councillor. Essentially, audit and risk are looking for greater feedback from the EMs, certainly in terms of the minutes and the items on there. So I would encourage all EMs, if you have any questions, concerns, feedback after reading the minutes or you pass them on to me, I can follow them up on your behalf. Any further questions then? That, thank you councillor for that question. In that case, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against, carried, thank you. Item 14, reports from council offices, 14.1. The office of the chief executive, his ordinary report, 14.1.1. The 2025 National General Assembly called for motions. This is primarily an opportunity, it goes to all councils. If anybody has motions that they wish to put to Alga, councillor Knox.
Given that the meeting, sorry, given that the motions close on the 31st of March, I wonder whether we could list this in the next two council meetings? I can't think of anything at the minute, but given another two months, we might well think of something. And while I was speaking about the National General Assembly, past practice has always been to allow at least one other elected member to attend, so I assume that that will be made available for somebody who may wish to attend this time around. Not me because I can't go, but somebody may wish to go.
Certainly councillor, yes, that is law procedure, yes. Yeah, from my experience last year, if there's usually anything that needs to be introduced, there are so many other councillors throughout the nation that put up untold numbers of recommendations. That's certainly valid point councillor. That is basically, if I look at the recommendation again, would somebody care to, well, it is there to... I need new glasses or I need a bigger screen. Yes, sorry. Yes, there did seem to be a discrepancy in some of their paperwork as to what was the closing date. I did pick up two dates in their paperwork. We have a recommendation based on what councillor said to consider it and seek further information at the next meeting. Councillor Knox, you're moving that one?
Moving it, yes.
Deputy Mayor Boarder, you're seconding?
Yes.
Any further comments or questions? Otherwise, I will put the motion, those in favour. Against, carried, thank you for that slight hiccup. Item 14.1.2, the CEO's action report for January 2025. I'll refer to CEO if anybody has any questions or comments. Councillor Simpson.
On page 74, they're talking about the Wanderers' Sorrel Club. Feast being amended and it's been out for public consultation. I haven't seen any on public consultation matter. I'm for the proposal, I'm just commenting that I haven't seen any public consultation information.
I think that may be a different agenda item councillor, you said page 74? At some...
You guys speak up.
Hey, my apologies councillor, sorry, I was just trying to find the item you were referring to. Has anyone got an update regarding where the Wanderers are with the request for a review of their lease fee?
I'll take that one on notice and get back to council, I don't have that at the tip of my tongue as to what the process is there, so I'll take that one on notice.
Yeah, as I said, I'm not against a proposal, I think it's fine, I mean, it's good, but there's a comment there, I haven't seen anything about, so I thought, yeah, I'd like information.
And if I can, just through the mayor, I mean, typically these sorts of public consultation are quite narrow and are under our public consultation policy, which requires 21 days' notice of public consultation actually occurring. And that is often listed as a, you know, a public notice in a circulating newspaper in the council area. I'll double check exactly the process for that consultation process, but it's not a consultation process similar to what we would use in the context of the foreshore master plan or changes to a playground or something of that nature. It's a very vanilla standard of public consultation.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Boarder.
Thank you mayor, the page 68, the Waila jetty additional seating. We'd moved a motion to install two bench seats. There was some discussion on the night of relocating some of the seats that are near the sculpture by the Surf Club. And so I just wonder where that might be up to, given that that might be a more cost-effective option.
Yeah, through the mayor, as per the response in relation to this item, this was a resolution only at the December council meeting. Clearly, over the Christmas New Year period, we've had some stuff on leave. So as the comment is listed there, we're looking at the financial implications of different options and we'll come back to council in due course with what those options are.
And just to confirm that, that would include potentially the relocation of those two seats? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you deputy mayor. If there are no further questions or comments, we have a recommendation there to receive a note, the chief executive officer's report, move deputy mayor Boarder.
Yes.
Seconded councillor Simpson. There are no further questions, I'll put that motion, those in favour. Against, carried, thank you. Item 14.2, corporate services ordinary reports, 14.2.1, the monthly budget report for December 2024. You have a report which will take us read if anybody has any questions or comments. Councillor Knox.
I've got a question in regard to the childcare centre. It says in the report that delays have been incurred while value managing overruns and PC sums. By implication, that seems to indicate there's a cost overrun. If that is so, how much is the overrun likely to be? That's the first part of the question.
Yeah, as outlined, I believe in the, yeah, in that the reason it's not given a specific figure so far is because we haven't got a specific figure. We're working with the contractor, but getting final dollar figures on that variation have been difficult. The initial estimates were a significant amount and that's where the value management has come in. I think that actually arrived at the final answer to that, but getting the final listings out of it. My understanding is it probably won't be too significant. Like putting a figure on is hard because we haven't got the final figures. I think the initial amount was somewhere between 100 and 150,000, thinking that it was somewhere between 25 and 50 now. And that that will be funded from the amount that we left unallocated at the start of the year for this reason, for dealing with project overruns or for other priorities that come up. But yeah, we'll report that, let's get back to council as soon as we have an answer.
Okay, the second part of the question is, given the childcare centre is nearing completion, could we provide an opportunity for elected members to go and have a look at what we've done?
Short answer is absolutely yes.
Most definitely. Thank you for that councillor, we'll certainly make sure that happens. Deputy Mayor Boarder.
Yeah, just a quick one, the Rec Centre Efficiency Project, currently waiting the outcome of the funding application, with this having been delayed, do we have any idea of an ETA on a response of when that funding might come through?
No, we're just guessing it'll be part of the federal election lead-up. That's our anticipation, but we haven't got a definitive date from the federal government yet, just that they're still deliberating.
Thank you, councillor Simpson.
I noticed we have a $36,000 overspend on curb type waste again. Do we have results to our audit yet?
No, not at this stage.
Any further questions or comments? In that case, we have a recommendation that we receive a note, the monthly budget report. Would somebody care to, deputy mayor Boarder?
Moving up.
And councillor Simpson. There are no further questions or comments, I'll put that motion, those in favour. Against, carried, thank you. Item 14.2.2, the Audit and Risk Committee Terms of Reference. We have a recommendation there, if anybody has any questions or comments, I will refer them. If not... Somebody, councillor Knox?
Moving.
Your move. Deputy Mayor Boarder?
Seconding.
You're seconding. In that case, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against, carried, thank you. Item 14.2.3, representation review. Quite a lengthy explanation there, something we have to do. If anybody has any further questions or comments, very happy to refer them to the CEO. Councillor Knox.
We actually used to do this in-house previously, certainly in my time anyway. And I note that on page 101, it states, previous selected persons have included council CEO or governance staff. So my question is, why can't we do it in-house? Why do we need to keep going at the consultants?
Is there a requirement to use someone external?
No.
No, yeah.
Um, the requirement of the Local Government Act is that a suitably qualified person undertake the representation review. Um, it certainly, within the organisation, there are probably a number of us that could undertake that review. But given resources and the attention of those resources on some of the major projects that are across the organisation, the decision was made to go out to tender for these services. Um, they, we have actually received tenders back and they are all quite reasonable prices and, and reasonable costs. And we'll be able to get this body of work done without actually impinging on the resource utilisation across other projects.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? In that case, we do have a three-part recommendation there. Would somebody care to move that recommendation? Move councillor Simpson, second to deputy mayor Boarder. There are no further questions or comments, I'll put the recommendation, those in favour. Against? Thank you councillor, carried. Item fourteen point two point four, professional services fee increase at the Wyla Recreation Centre. Does anybody have any questions or comments to refer? Councillor Knox?
Not, not opposed to it, but I wonder if any dialogue's taken place with the particular users of the facility.
Thank you councillor. A question I would have is, I'd be interested in their justification of the, within that report, the size increase.
Um, through the mayor, the conversations that have been held with the, um, the YMCA, this is an increase which is being applied across all YMCA's, um, in South Australia is my understanding. And there haven't been increases for quite some time, and so it's about actually catching up with the uh, increasing costs in terms of running the centres, so that's the reason for the quantum of increase.
Thank you.
It's a safe report, it's, it's YMCA wide in South Australia, yes.
Have we got any numbers about how many people use in their centre, per annum?
Uh, yes, we do have those numbers.
Is it up or down on what it has been?
Um, it's actually, um, staying about the same. Um, they have, there, there was a, a slight reduction in numbers as the centre was being refurbished, but those numbers have gone back up. It's a well-used centre, um, and gets a lot of patronage. Those numbers are reported on a, on a quarterly basis in quarterly reports around the performance of the centre that come through too.
Thank you. Any further questions or comment, councillor Knox?
Just wondering if those reports that come through on the statistics could come to council as well, because it's useful information for us.
Um, absolutely, we do bring quarterly reports on the REC Centre through to council, but we um, certainly can include additional statistics in those reports. Um, as you say, it is useful council, useful for council members to be aware of the utilisation of the centre. So we'll make sure that it, those reports in future contain that data.
Thank you.
Sorry. Um, just for completeness, those reports are included in the information report. So just if councillors go looking for previous stats, they're in the information report.
Thank you, CEO. If there's no further questions or comments, we have a recommendation there that we endorse the request to increase the professional fees. Move councillor Knox, second to deputy mayor Boarder, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against Kerry, thank you. Item fourteen point two point five, an update on building rationalisation programme. We have a recommendation to note and support the direction and progress of the building rationalisation programme. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Yep, councillor Knox?
Councillor Boarder beat me, but mine got the match.
Yes, I thought that, and then they all juggled around. All I know is my name's in the middle.
Okay, you want me to go first then?
Yes.
Sorry, Peter.
That's right.
Um, my, my question is about, um, the, the fauna park. What's the justification and what are the arguments for returning that to the Crown? Would we not be better off hanging on to it for some perhaps future purpose? I know it's only reserved on care, control and management, but nonetheless, it's, it may give us an advantage somewhere down the track.
My recollection, recollection is that this body uh, made the decision to hand back to Crown. Uh, council.
I don't think so.
Right.
Um, I think, um, bit of a variation on a couple of the comments. Um, I think the land currently has a dedication for recreation purposes over it, is that right, Tony? Fauna, fauna park is at recreation or?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Yep. So, excuse me. So I think the consideration of future land uses, excuse me, on that site is something that council will need to consider in the future. But I think what this report is identifying is that previous land uses and future land uses are going to have to be revisited by the council and ultimately will need to be approved by the state.
Um, I was just saying, I think it has a, um, land use zoning of recreation over the site, which dictates the type of development that can occur on the site. Regardless of who is the owner or manager of that site, that recreation zone will still dictate what sort of development can occur. I think the conversation that we had in relation to the fauna park when we needed to, um, clean that side up is that being the land's in our care and control, when something goes pear shaped, if the lease is directly through council, being our care and control, we're effectively left holding the baby as if the land was ours anyway. So those costs to clean up and the like were borne by council because it was in our care and control.
Anything further councillor Knox?
No.
Uh, deputy mayor Boarder?
Just a comment, I've mentioned it before, but I wanted to just make it known that I, I feel as though this is a very complex issue that we're working through um, as a group, that it's not glamorous, but it's one of those things that is un, uh, it's, it's not a, um, in, in the, the public view all the time, but I just think it goes a long way to resolving the financial position of the council for the longer term. Um, and just wanted to acknowledge that publicly.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Is there any further comments or questions regarding that report? If not, we have a recommendation that we note and support the direction of the progress. Move councillor, deputy mayor Boarder, second to councillor Campbell. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against Kerry, thank you. Item fourteen point two point six, the CEO Performance Review, the process to engage independent persons.
Hmm, I'll just declare a potential conflict of interest and leave the, the chamber.
Thank you, CEO. As you'll all be aware, this is to start the administration process to replace, uh, the previous independent outside advisor. If anybody's got any questions or comments, refer them to our manager corporate, councillor Knox?
Councillor Boarder was definitely before me.
Alright, I was, I was just gonna move it, I didn't have a comment.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, cancel.
Um. The first one is, will it be an open tender or will we target consultants?
The report indicates it will be an open tender.
Okay, um, the second thing is, um, will we, will we be asking the consultants to advise on their methodology?
The proposal is, and Sue may wish to add to this, that the consultants will be asked to provide an indication as to their methodology, but the finalisation of the methodology needs to be counsel in workshop with the appointed, uh, with the appointed consultant.
Right, I understand that, I just wanted to make sure that we had their ideas coming to the fore.
Yes, yes.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you councillor. Councillor Inglis?
Uh, councillor Knox asked a question, I was gonna ask.
Lovely, thank you. If there's no further questions, we have a recommendation there, would somebody care to move? Uh, move deputy mayor Boarder, second to councillor Campbell, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against Kerry, thank you. Item fourteen point two point seven, the reappointment of the independent member to council's Audit and Risk Committee. Very straightforward report there. Councillor Simpson?
Proposing.
Deputy Mayor Boarder?
Seconding.
Seconding, I have a motion then, I'll put that motion, those in favour, against Kerry, thank you. Item fourteen point three, City Growth Ordinary Reports, fourteen point three point one, the closure of the Wyla City Council Public Library during a period in March this year. Deputy Mayor Boarder?
It may be in there, but I couldn't see it, but when we close the library, can we please have a QR code reference, uh, directing people to an online page that explains what's happening to them, uh, to the library? Just to make sure that's in there, it might already be in the process, but I just wanted to make sure so they can walk up there and go, why is it closed? They scan it, they find out why.
Certainly, there will be a big compass programme there. Councillor Knox?
The report says that council will manage staffing during this period in accordance with the EB. I'm just wondering what is actually intended to do with the staff if they can't work in the library?
Um, in, in, can, in line with the EB, staff will be offered to either take leave or to be redeployed to other areas of council within their, um, you know, their span of hours.
I can find a good job for them.
Thank you. There are any further questions or comments? Otherwise, we have a two-part recommendation there. Move councillor Boarder, seconded, I have a seconded, councillor Simpson. I'll put the motion then, those in favour. Against Kerry, thank you. Item fourteen point four, City Infrastructure Ordinary Reports, we have none. Item fifteen, Information Decision Reports, fifteen point one, council members, fifteen point one point one, the mayor's list of engagements. If anybody has any questions, I will try to elaborate. Otherwise, you have a recommendation there, if you would like to receive a note. Councillor Simpson?
Proposing.
And councillor Knox?
Inning.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against Kerry. I'm more than happy if somebody else wants to take the focus, another city in South Australia rather than Wyla for a while, but that may not be the case. Fifteen point two, Corporate Services City Growth, the fifteen point two point one, the monthly information report for January. You have a, a very detailed report there, some recommendations, if anybody has any questions or comments, more than happy to refer them. If not, councillor Knox?
Moving.
And deputy mayor Boarder?
Quick comment and seconding, just to say, uh, the, um, childcare centre, I found it quite informative. Um, the information about the childcare centre trying to aggregate the roots of the tree so it doesn't buckle the car but I just thought that was quite interesting, so I just wanted to say thank you for including it.
Thank the report preparer. We have a motion then, thank you for that, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against Kerry, thank you. Item sixteen, notices of motion, we have none. Item seventeen, questions on notice. You have them on the, the screen there, questions, uh, councillor Knox, did? Sorry, are you happy with those answers? Do you want them read out? Right, thank you. Are you happy with the information that's been provided?
Yes.
Which is now on the record.
Further information, which is to come.
Right, thank you.
Sorry Phil, I, I may, I had one question and I meant to ask the questions, I know. Somebody asked me on the weekend, how long is the fence gonna stay around the lighthouse out there? Seems to have been there for a long time.
I think that's one of the answers there. That's, that's the, one of the questions councillor Knox has raised. Yes. If you can understand councillor Knox's question there and the answer. You wish that to be recorded as a question without notice or just clarification now that it's been asked?
Just clarification.
Thank you for those questions councillor. Item eighteen, questions without notice, there are none. Notes without notice, no, sorry.
Some of us may have questions without notice.
Sorry, sorry. Sorry, go back to item eight, and questions without notice. Councillor Knox?
My question is, do we at all police parking in Wyla, I know we work for Wyla, with particular attention to disabled parking zones? Because they're really hard to find sometimes and invariably, most of the people in the, in the zones don't have the requisite sticker hanging out from the mirror.
Yes.
Uh, yes, through the mayor, we do monitor parking and, um, I can ensure that we have a particular focus on disabled parking over the next month, have a, have a spree, uh, in terms of disabled parking.
Thank you. Thank you councillor. Councillor Klobbika?
Of three. Okay, the first one, excuse me, I've got a sore throat. Um, if you're coming up Butlingar Way, uh, from the foreshore, the left-hand side makes it difficult to traverse as there's no defined footpath for residents. So a majority of walkers use the right-hand side, which, um, basically is a dirt path or surface. Um, and it's quite uneven. Can we consider grading this regularly just to make it a little bit flatter and easier for people to traverse?
Um, I mean, certainly that could be considered, but it would be considered, um, a service level increase in terms of what there currently is there. And we would need to consider what the, uh, resource and cost impact, I know it's only a small area, but, um, you know, the, the utilisation of resources in those sorts of spaces, so, um, you know, that's the, the sort of thing that could come through to council as a motion with notice to which then additional information can be provided to council as to impact on resources. And also the impact in terms of the natural, um, uh, walking paths of people and, and, and how that particular area works from a safety point of view.
Okay, so motion with notice and we can investigate that further?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm happy to assist with, um, with forming of that motion with notice, but I do um, say that the manager of city development has a comment to make on this regard too.
Thank you Cathy, um, just that the, um, the foreshore masterplan and Marina masterplan had some, um, extensive. had some, um, extensive, um, connection pathways for pedestrians, um, itemised and detailed in that plan. And when we did the, you remember, when we did the, um, endorsing of that plan, there was some deputations in relation to the Marina end, so we were to start a workshop to meet with the Marina users, including the boaties and the like, um, who frequent the area, to finalise, um, that end. It was always thought that we would do the grand, um, you know, discovery centre and those sorts of things, but we've pared it back and gonna start the workshop to actually get those pathway connections and car park and the like finalized. So that's work that we, we're gonna implement with a workshop with the Marina users and the community in general in the very near future.
Okay, my second question, so I've been asked by some residents about the ivory at Adirond Gardens, and in particular what measures are in place to protect the welfare of those animals when it's hot? And, um, there's, they've seen people tormenting of young kids and stuff like that, so I'm just curious.
And certainly through the mayor, uh, the ivory at Adirond Gardens is monitored and looked after very closely by the Adirond Gardens staff that, um, maintain the whole of the gardens. Um, you know, on days of, of very hot days, they ensure that there is sufficient water that, uh, that is in there for the birds. Um, and I do know that they take great care, I can take that one on further notice to, uh, provide information to the council as to what is the maintenance regime and, and the welfare that, um, um, actions that are taken on days of hot weather etcetera, provide further information for you.
Suppose I'm interested as well as, to what happens on the weekends.
Um, yes, they are monitored on the weekends as well, but, um, I'll get that further information for you.
Lastly, um, the replacement lights on Hummock Hill, I know they're being budgeted for this year. Um, can we have a definitive answer as to when that's actually gonna occur?
Uh, Grant, do you have any further information on that one? And I'll take that one on notice as to a definitive timeframe, but of course, what we'll have to do is go out and get quotes and, um, and then engage the contractor for the installation, but I'll get that information and get it back to members.
Thank you. Uh, deputy mayor border?
Thank you, and it's a simple question, I think we've talked about it a little bit recently, but when will the cameras at the foreshore be operational again? I know there were a couple of steps in that process.
Um, again, I'll provide additional information once we have it. There is certainly some work that needs, engineering work that needs to be done to reinstall the, um, infrastructure on the top of Hummock Hill in order for those cameras to receive signal to then become operational again. What we are, uh, doing is considering, um, alternative options for the cameras down at the foreshore. And, um, as part of the 25, 26 budget process, um, there is, there will likely be a budget bid for some additional work in that area.
So is that two different sort of paths that we're going down? Where one is to reinstate what was there to get them active in the short term whilst investigating the longer term solution for it, or are we waiting until the longer term solution comes, comes in?
It will all come together in actual fact in that, um, to spend money on an engineering solution to continue on a potentially non-contemporary surveillance framework down at the, at the foreshore, that's not saying that it's not working, but, um, uh, because there, there are, um, portions of it that are working. But we are looking to get that up and running ASAP from a security point of view. Um, if there are alternative options in terms of getting it up and running, um, at a quicker pace than fixing the infrastructure on Hummock Hill, we will do that and we'll bring through a budget bid to the council in order to make that happen. The key is to get an outcome, uh, as soon as possible.
Thank you. Thank you deputy mayor, councillor Inglis?
I've got two questions, the first one is, as you're travelling west down Jackson Avenue, there's two lanes of traffic and all of a sudden the left-hand inside lane stops and there's one light, I've never seen an accident there on the weekend, so it needs to be, the lines need to be changed and there needs to be a sign merged, merged to one lane. It's just before you get to the Norrie Avenue intersection, there's two lanes, two lanes and then the, the inside lane by the houses, just suddenly it just stops because the island juts out, so I would suspect that we, before something serious happens, we need to have a sign that merge into one lane and maybe get the, the road markings changed and reflect that. And the second question is, from the sundowner inn on the both sides of Lincoln Highway to Wander Sock Club, there is a lot of dead and scrubby looking trees that aren't a great look for our city because there's a lot of people entering eggs in the city through them, so could we look at getting all the dead trees cut down and pulled out and taken away? It's just a terrible, terrible look.
And I'll take that one on notice, um, we are aware that there are a number of other trees across the city in prominent locations that are also suffering at the moment and, uh, have had a, a discussion with the team in relation to that. And we've been experiencing some difficulties with the irrigation systems, um, in, in a number of different locations.
Completely dead, they're just absolutely done, they're just, and they're not, they're not big trees, it's just horrible from the sight.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, I've requested a meeting, um, at the earliest possible convenience, which will probably be next week to have a look at where and, and how some of these trees are not surviving in the current times in prominent locations and what the steps are that we need to take around it.
Thank you councillor, deputy mayor border? Oh, oh. If there are no further questions without notice, thank you for those questions. Item 18, motions without notice, do we have any motions without notice? Oh, thank you. Item 20, consideration of confidential items, we have none. That brings us to item 21, close. And then we have a list of our upcoming meeting dates.